It'll be different.
Can you order it? I'm sorry, we have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here. I'm supposed to inform you all that the meeting is being audio and video recorded. And next thing, how do we have minutes? Second. Any changes or discussions? Okay, Alan, David say aye. Post. And yeah, let me just mention really quick, Grant is gone on vacation, Hill had a family emergency, and Pat is out of town this week as well, so we're too many people. So thank you for being here. About how many? Our triple claims.
A word.
Second.
The camera system that was covered by, it's already, we got the funding for that, and that's what those two minor items are.
Mm-hmm, it was offered by our county fund.
Yeah. We just finally some of them.
Because they finally completed it, so okay, some of those things, I didn't really want to pay them, and so they were.
Absolutely.
And everything works. Yeah. Any other questions? Discussion, public comment?
I do, on the bus parts, we know those parts.
I know we had, we had one bus break down, and I'm not exactly sure what it was, but it was kind of. Used, I don't remember, something, it was a route bus, yeah, there was a bus that, a route bus that broke down, Wes had a bus break down. And I'm not exactly sure what it was.
Sure.
There you go.
So rest of the stuff to bike home, are we done with that for now? All the leaks are fixed, the repairs, we've, you know, all of it. And I figured they were, yeah, it's kind of, long ways, get one more. More, yeah, we went into a little bit more expensive system, they're doing a crimp tube instead of a solder tube now. A little bit more expensive on the base parts, but fast repair, and it's solid. Instead of solid, yeah, it's more solid than, and part of that, you've been down there enough to know that some of those, you can't get that crimper in there because of the spacing, but on the ones that they could, they went back in it and got different crimps on there, so. And when they do the splicing, which is coming up, they're just the next week, they hope that they'll get crimper pairs, put those valves in, so we can, yeah, okay, yeah, thanks Russ.
Anyone need more time? All right, Alan, David say aye. Bye-bye. Post. Motion asked. Great, and Steph, we have public comment on the non-agenda items, so I know we have someone here to like. You can do it.
Well, Lucy, you got this.
You guys got it. Yeah, you got it. Okay.
Um, we're the, I'm Lucia, awesome, thank you. And we are trying to get the eighth graders to come up to high school or FTC robotics. There's four eighth graders that we would like to come up. They're showing middle school and our high school coach feel like they're mature enough. We come up and we feel a little bit of better experience at that role, as well. Our middle school robotics team has, they're overflowing with kids at the moment. And it helps the eighth graders, they have about twelve. Which is really great for them, but unfortunately, for a team, you're only allowed to have ten members registered and go to competition, which means they would have to exclude some kids from going, having, without the eighth graders over. And we feel like it'd be beneficial to the high school for the eighth graders that come up to have more of a team and more support. We have pride members right now who, or which are doing to other activities all the time. So we feel like just have them before other boys from the third ability goes out.
Hi, I'm Bryce Cartwright, and I do believe that us eighth graders should be able to go up because without us, we wouldn't really have that much of a bigger robotics, older robotics group. And I think having us would really help during competitions and things. Because like moving stuff would just be easier, helping get things done, like building. Just tough out a lot, but I think we should actually help with older kid robotics and not like have to just stay back. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Emily Wicks. I will have two different things. I'd like to start by saying I think that Jamie is doing an amazing job as AD this year. We know that last year was a trial basis. Went well, and she agreed to do it again, and everybody proved it. Or the board proved it. I just wanted to let the board know from a parental perspective. I have four kids, I have three kids involved in activities. She's very on top of getting meetings on the calendar, it's not same day, you're on a meeting later today. Game scheduled her out, kudos goes to Amy Hassan with that too. I know they work together really hard to make sure that those are all updated. So that's, as a parent, that's been super helpful, working with Paul and the bussing. I know that bussing is a continued issue for the school district, so I really would like to just. Sometimes it's just nice to hear your nice things, right, as a board of whatever kind, so I wanted to say that I really appreciate everything that Jamie has done. And I want to thank Roxy for stepping into the cross-country position and doing that because that would have been something that we would have lost, that would have been, I think detrimental overall. So I wanted to give those kudos out, and then I would like to continue to speak as a parent with two kids that are involved with the robotics, one at high school level and one at the middle level. And like Lucy was talking about, there's twelve or fourteen, six through eight years participating, and there's only a few, just a scant handful. I know that Etta is involved in wrestling and so is unable to go for the qualifying event for robotics, like, for sure. And so I know that there was three people on the team that won state, which is great for that year, but I just, I think it would be really unfortunate if somebody was sick that weekend, or something else came up. If, I know some of the other kids, I mean, there's somebody that's on FFA and speech and debate and basketball, so. I know, and then for retention, to really build that high school team, like a lot of the teams we have right now, sports just across the board are younger, and so for my sixth grader to be able to get more time with coaches at the middle school robotics, because the older kids are able to move up. I just think that would be a positive thing. Thank you.
Thanks all of your kids for coming and speaking to us too. During the public comment, the board can't follow up with any discussion. That's public comment rules. So we don't have this on the agenda tonight. Jamie, under her athletic director's report, might give us some numbers, we write in to the school robotics and things like that, so we might have a little discussion about it, but there's nothing on the agenda for a board to make a decision on tonight, just so you're aware. But thank you. Anything else? Okay, communications to come on the board, I have a thank you note from Wes Garrett. Says, "Thank you for the beautiful cart implant. We're all very touched by your kindness." He's a boss with his wife, I'm sure we're all a little bit of that. Somebody's got to rest. See that if you want, but sure. And then next we have board chair report, so Amanda Brown, thank you so much for coming tonight. Amanda missed the introduction that we did last month and asked her to come tonight, and she has a few things to share with us too.
I'm sorry for coming this way, then you don't have to turn your neck. I'm Amanda Brown, I'm the new history, high school history teacher, government, world history, American wars is my elective that I teach. And so I also have stepped into the roles of student council representative and junior high volleyball coach. I'm also the east coast trip advisor, so I thought I'd just talk about that a little bit while I have the information. And then if you have any questions. So east coast trip has been scheduled for, the tour window date is March seventeenth through the twenty-eighth. They get those days just in case there's weather, something happens and we need to reschedule our flight. But technically, our requested tour dates are March twentieth through March twenty-eighth, that's a Thursday to a Friday. Those are preferred dates. So we get eight days, nine days with travel day, we leave out of Great Falls. It's a shared day with another group, could be a junior high group, it could be a high school group, we're not sure at this point. We do have eleven students signed up, three seniors and then the rest are juniors, so it's a pretty good group, it's wonderful. Because we, going into the school year, had one person signed up, so we are very excited to have eleven people signed up. Last year, I did take a group to the east coast trip at the previous school I was at, I took thirteen juniors. So this isn't a number that is going to be difficult as a single advisor to take. So I'm not nervous about or worried about taking them as a just me. The price to take, the student is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars that they are raising money for. And the price does, it did go up as of October first if they didn't put ninety-five dollars down. So at this point, it's three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. For an adult, if an adult wanted to go, it'd be four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, if you were just curious. So I'm just trying to think. We will be going to the east coast, we're going to several different cities, and then traveling around. They, every hotel we go to, there will be chaperones in the hallways at night, chaperone with us, there's someone that travels, two guys that travels with us. So we will have, maybe a female, there will always be a male person with us, in case there was something that came up. So yeah, I think that's about it. Any questions? Very excited, I love going to east coast, but history is kind of my thing, so. Oh, I love it. But I got it for twenty years, so it's kind of my thing, so. Yeah, any other questions about, I am very happy to be here, so. For being, been extremely welcoming, the people and students have been wonderful, so, thank you.
You're filling a lot of shoes already.
Yeah. Oh, past trying to get me to do the other trip now too, so. I have to start saying no to that. You kind of like to smooth over and then you're like, hey, yes, without understanding what you're saying, yes, yeah. But thank you so much, and yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Yes.
Spending your day.
No problem.
I just wanted to mention, I put levy promotion on here, just as, like, I want to keep it top of mind that we need to work on. I think, so I was talking to Pat and Roxy, we were talking about we need to kind of video promotion, promotion, so we work on that. But if anybody has other ideas, things you think would be important, if you're hearing things from the community, and you think there's things that we should address, we could always schedule a Q and A meeting or something. I think we'll reach more people if we make a little video and.
Yeah, we talked about, having Pat get back, and then kind of maybe sitting down and talking about just a kind of attack, like how to inform the public, maybe having Bethany interview. You know, a few people or do a couple pieces of special on their repairs and stuff that everybody happened and what needs to continue to happen. And then I think to really talk about the financial impact, having some clear numbers, right, like how the hospital mills have dropped off. Where, you know, the boiler mills are coming off as well, that's super positive. So just more like informational, that I can't really, like, you know, be cheerleaders and go out on my cold campaign signs, but I think the board members can, so, right, Helen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we figured once he got back from Ireland, we'd sit down and try to get an idea.
When's the city have their meetings?
Um, second and fourth month, first and third.
First and third.
Okay, just the opposite.
I'll try to go along those.
Okay.
I'm a total guarantee.
Yeah, we'll talk to Russ's agent, kind of get him winded up, yeah, that'd be great.
Your people can call our people.
Yes, I brought people, so I would have to get on the agenda down there.
Uh, or you can do it during public comment, but you could, you could actually be on the agenda, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'll talk to Lanning.
Their next meeting, they, so they met last day, so it won't be next Monday, but Monday after.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Jamie, all right. Let it be short, and I sent you my agenda, and it's a little bit longer. Lots of thank yous to all of you for helping and supporting us through homecoming, to rest for homecoming, it's a lot of hours, and we were talking about, it's something we love and we're ready for it to be done when it's over too. So I appreciate all that he put in to make it happen, and it was a good week. I want to thank Paul, he's not here, but for putting up with my constant schedule changes and making our bus routes happen so far. Since we talked last time, it's still in constant flux on schedules with referees, with other schools and, and the teams. I want to thank too, while I'm here, all the volunteers who work tirelessly to make everything happen. I am constantly calling and bugging people for chain gangs and clock keepers and referees and line judges and bookkeepers and ticket takers and confessions workers. And people rarely tell me no, and when they do, they, they always are so kind about it, and I appreciate them, and I can't say thank you enough because it takes a lot of people to pull off our events. And on that note, if you were looking for something to do on Saturday, we are hosting a tournament, and I am looking for support there too.
That was a perfect thing.
Wasn't it perfect? I didn't plan that, but then I had some cancellations right before this, so I'll take you. Yes. So middle school tennis wrapped up their season, they had a tournament in Great Falls on September thirtieth, and they're done for this year. Football's continuing to chug along, and they will play another home game this Friday against Shelby. This will be the final middle school game that we have as well. We were able to add a few sixth and seventh grade games to support our younger students, we had one last night here out on the field. So that was pretty exciting to see those guys out there. The varsity team will have senior night and pink night on October twenty-fifth here against Shenavon, that'll wrap up regular season. Volleyball's continuing to be busy as well. We hosted a mid-season tournament last Saturday, very full day, double court volleyball action. They head to Big Sandy and Belt this week. We're luckily have, we luckily have been able to add some C squad to our schedule, so we'll have four and three squad games coming up in this ending of our regular season, which is great because we have so many girls and it'll give them some more court time. Senior night will be October twenty-fourth, it's a Thursday, against Centerville, and pink night will be Saturday, October twenty-sixth, when we play here against Cupcake. Middle school volleyball will finish their season this Saturday, we'll host the seven D district tournament here in our gym. Another full day of double court action for that, so.
Divisional, that night.
District.
Well, middle school.
Middle school.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, no, sorry, you're good.
I'm not keeping up with you.
Yeah, no, so middle school district will be first, we'll host that, and it'll be a full day of double court action, so two clocks and all the things going. And then both middle school and high school have the opportunity to travel to the University of Providence. They're going to be able to watch the Argos versus Northern game on October seventeenth. I want to thank Sarah World, we contacted her, and she, along with the University of Providence are helping to make this happen. And so that's a neat thing for the girls to be able to do. And then after regular season, we will host the Northern State Divisional Volleyball Tournament here this year in Fort Benton, the week of November fourth, so right before the next meeting. Cross-country, they're running along. I sent them to Havre yesterday, Midland High School, and then high school went to Volca on Saturday. And then they will both finish up their regular season in Townsend next week before they head on to participate at state in Missoula on October twenty-sixth. And six of the seven are qualified so far, so that's pretty exciting. Cheer, we, we, we were able to start cheer. Five students joined this late fall season, and it's been great to see them out at the games and have their support, and they are excited to be there. FFA has thirty active members right now. She said her upcoming, they're headed to the national convention the end of the month, but they have the egg expo coming up in November. Last month, they attended district leadership school with twenty-two of their members, competed at districts for horse and live duck judging and qualified for state and horse.
Life's not business by like five points.
Oh. Yeah, so close. Robotics has begun, and there were quite a few middle school students that showed interest in participating last week. Well, there was a few less than they thought, but there's always, you know, they'll get them there. They weren't, she thought there maybe were up to sixteen before that she had counted that it expressed interest, but the actual number will be kind of figured out this, you know, coming up. High school, excuse me, has five members for returning from last year. And so, excuse me, I'm sorry, in the conversation that kind of just came about with, with what they expressed interest in. So my first reaction was that when we look at our other activities and sports, we've chosen in the past to move them up when we need them to make a team. And so that, my first reaction was that in following that standard, it's not necessary to move them up to make a team, because we can have a team with five of the high school robotics students, was, was kind of my first look at it. Like she said, we won with three in the past, and the team that went to nationals had two. Though I very much understand, you know, more hands make light work and spread it around, and the learning is great. I went and I spoke to two of the past coaches that we've had in the program, and then I also spoke just before with Brady, who is our coach now. And a big thing that's talked about, really stressed with the past coaches, was the maturity level. And I don't mean to make that sound negative or in a bad way, it's just, you know, eighth graders are on a different maturity level than the older kids. And what they told me is that robotics is very much a sport of independence. They have to go out there, they have to work, and they have to do the things, and they have to do the communication without the coach. The coach is not allowed to go touch the robot, the coach is not allowed to go do that. They're kind of, this is their project and they do it. And so the maturity comes, it's big into play when you see them having to, to run that, and the independence, it comes big into play. Our past coaches were very strongly against moving up eighth graders when I spoke to the two of them. The two that I spoke to, they were, they said they would not have been comfortable in their role with that. My concern with it this year, though we do have the five, is bringing up possibly up to five more that expressed interest. That, that's quite a bit more, and it's quite, you know, a handful of younger kids that you would be bringing up if you discuss that. And we have right now a single coach, we do not have two on the docket, we only have one. And so it's, it's a lot to put on one person's plate, and he ultimately said he would be more comfortable with them, with them staying with middle school, is what he told me. So that is, that's kind of where that conversation came to me just in the past couple days, and so I just wanted to present you with my thoughts on it. I know it's not on the agenda to make any decisions, but that was my thoughts. And then when I did talk to our middle school coaches last night on the phone, you know, in the past, we had one year, we had, we had three different teams created that did three different projects in junior high, and we, I think there was only one year with three, if I remember, but we've had two different teams that can make. So we talked about different options that could be done with a great number of kids. We could create two different teams and two different projects, they've had, I know that they had two boards in the past and two game plots in the past and did that. So that was an option, we talked about other roles they could play, and to see what we could do there. That's, that's where that conversation was. Do you have any questions for me before I?
I thought Lucy said that they were only going to have one active participant.
They have five. They're dual sports, sports people, right, so they are busy. But they were in the past too, the ones who won the state tournament, and they were in speech and drama, they were in basketball, they were in other things as well. So they have five. They're just, I think the concern is that they're busy kids. And understandably so.
But if they prioritize something else, they will have a team.
Is there a minimum for a team?
No. No.
There, is there a minimum, there's a minimum for how many they need to go to the qualifier, is that correct?
Brady didn't say no.
Like, did you qualify with one team member?
The team that went to nationals only had two members on the team, I do remember that. And so, my, like I said, my biggest concern is maturity, and after last year, I would be concerned about moving that age of, and that many of them up with a single coach. So that, that would be my speech to you, or my recommendation from my point of view. Yeah, do you have any more questions? Okay, I'll move on to, I have a couple recommendations for hire. We have not yet hired an assistant FFA advisor, and so after talking to some of the new teachers that Pat had, you know, he talked to in the past when he was hiring them. We've gone through, I would like to hire, or recommend hiring, excuse me, Ethan Cunningham, who is Brooke's husband for this role. He served in this last year as a volunteer, and he continues to be involved and great support. He willingly asked me to talk to the other people, you know, he didn't want this to be because he's associated with her, and I did, I went and talked to Ms. Disney and some others, she would express interest, but after looking at the responsibilities, they were wary of taking on that role, and so he would love to, he's going to be a part of it, he would love to be a part of it no matter what. At this point, I'd like to recommend him as the assistant FFA.
Any discussion? Yeah, Alan, favor say aye.
Aye.
Our volunteer cheer coaches have great enthusiasm, and they've been doing a great job supporting our kids and filling the role, but they only wanted fall, and winter season will be upon us soon, so after lots of discussion and maybe, maybe coaching, I'm not sure. I'd like to recommend Roxy Benjamin to be our cheer coach for this winter season. And then in addition, I know it's going to be separate, but I'll speak about it at the same, and you can tell me later. After some discussion today, I would also like to recommend Katie Guderjohn as a volunteer to work with the cheer team.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did the fall, why were the fall, why were the volunteers?
They wanted to be.
Okay.
They stepped up when. They stepped up when we couldn't find anybody else and they just wanted to be. I talked about paying them of, you know, a portion of the state, they chose, they, they want to do, to do this as a volunteer role.
I have no concern about you having a pet. Being Mrs. Argon Bright might help me a little bit too. What? Yeah, I think she were, I was just maybe next to her.
Yeah, I can ask about Katie's last year.
It's really not as hard when you like think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for being willing to do that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. It'll, it'll be an experience for sure. I'm excited about it.
Went to the football game the other night.
Yes.
And then the volleyball game, it made a big difference too, so.
Yeah.
When you have a game that has no energy, you feel it.
Yeah.
We don't have a motion yet. Do I need to sit out of this one?
Uh, no.
Any discussion? Okay, um, there is a aye. Those, motion passes.
Okay, so after our discussion, we have already hired our boys basketball. But we talked about providing a second assistant to support if uh, Coach Lourdes was to watch her son play. Um, after discussion, I would like to recommend Will Hucky for this position. He is very enthusiastic and excited to be able to step into this. He's previously served as coach in Charlie and Hollywood program. He's been involved with some of our younger programs, the Salvation Army and, and supporting us throughout things. He's knowledgeable of the game, willing to work and learn in the coaching and willing to step in and, and be right there as a partner and work with Heidi and Megan.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hey, on favor say aye. Motion passive.
I'm looking forward a little far. This season is in late February, March, but thinking about fifth and sixth grade basketball, they sometimes can support us in, in our other basketball programs, so the ones that um, are on board, I would like to bring to you and I would like to recommend that Kim Cutoff and Shalane Clark resume their positions as elementary girls' basketball coaches in that program. And Kim Hill will resume or come back as a elementary boys' basketball coach in that position.
So you're looking for one more, please?
Um, I have the um, Jenna Box previously. She just wants to have a little more time to consider and make sure that that's the right move. For her again, she very much enjoyed it, she just needs to check her timing.
This one will be district corner only, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
And then finally, just on a note for you, uh, we will start middle school basketball on Monday. For boys and girls, seventh and eighth grade, um, looking at the numbers in what we have, they're going to be a little slimmer than we have been used to in the past. Um, the number of girl hands varied and so depending on who shows up at practice, we may need to ask sixth grade to join our girls' program. But I will wait to see numbers that actually come to practice. Um, and Shami Brosman, you have previously taken my recommendation and hired her as one of the coaches and she has regretfully discussed that she had to step down because of some of her life, um, plans that needed, that they just fell at the wrong time. Um, and so I put up an in-house advertisement and was in a few discussions, um, it didn't quite come right now in time, um, so we'll still work on that. But we will be looking to support Kim with the girls and we have some different ideas of how that can look until we get someone in place too. So it's, it's not, with the numbers, it's not overwhelming to look at. And I, I think that's most of what I have. Do you have any questions for me? Good job, Jamie. Thank you.
Well, they took Willer away, you know, he's our top salesman from the fifty fifty.
I know they're gonna mend them.
Uh, as we start out, um, today was fire prevention day, um, that we actually had the volunteer fire department. I'd like to thank them for um, pulling the rigs out and they came over and walked through the schools at both, both schools. Um, it is a big deal, not so much at the high school, but the elementary. When they pull up and they walk through the school and they get to see the trucks and stuff, so I thank the volunteer fire department, um, they're always on hand and whenever we're needed. Um, they were here at the uh, uh, for quite a while, um, during homecoming. And I thank them for that and the city for digging the pit, but the volunteer fire department brought both trucks or three trucks and um, were out there during the bonfire and and again, it's all volunteer and a lot of them have students and stuff here, but um, they are putting in their time and I appreciate it. Kale helping with the brad water leaks and um, we're still kind of ongoing on what we're doing there. We've, we've um, taken a lot of steps to alleviate um, a lot of them. Uh, over the course of the million gallons of water that we had coming through the roof. Um, and hopefully, um, we've got it pretty well curtailed. Um, he's called back there many times with me and, and surveyed it and we've powered and did different things, but uh, it, and it's not just because he's a board member, but um, he does help out quite a bit. Um, Larry retired, as you all know, and we had Bob hired on and Bob, um, one night going home, hit a deer with their car, totaled it and then um, couldn't get the apartment that they needed down at the bluffs and so we quit. Well, we were kind of short, no, we were shorthanded, or kind of shorthanded. And just kind of making do and Larry decided to come back and help, so he spent the last couple of weeks um, back on duty, which, which he likes it. I mean, it's still fine, but you know, he, he wants to slow down and, and I do thank him because homecoming is very, very stressful. It's long for everybody, everybody. It doesn't matter whether your parents are driving home at night as they are over here and stuff. It, it's long. And Larry stayed here until the wee hours, getting things ready for the next day and um, by himself. And he said, no, I got it. And, and he would do it graciously, came back and helped out and um, thankfully, we have a young fellow that, and I don't know if he's on the docket tonight.
He and she added it.
Okay, um, Aiden Manning um, came on board and Pat and I decided to, a- as we had talked to him that um, we were waiting for the background, we knew it was forthcoming and it was fine, but um, we went ahead and put him on and Larry's training him and um, he's on his own the next few days. Larry just told me he's gonna take a couple of days off now and rest and, and then he'll be back for the weekend events. Uh, great help, great help. Um, young man and um, really likes what he's doing and, and very, very capable and, and a great job. And of course, of course, he's down at the elementary. Um, he's always right up to par wherever it was going on, so we've got a great planning crew right now and, and Larry is, is more than um, willing to help train and, and keep them in line and, and what they need to do and he had a list of stuff for Aiden to do over to the next course, the next few days. Um, next thing, he goes to Carly in the tech department. We had a lot of stuff going on, as you all know, the last month. Um, we were putting in the new phones, we had the door openers going in and the cameras and it was all kind of simultaneously. And Carly coordinated all of that and I don't think anybody, you know, we, we don't really pay attention. That's yes, it's her job and she, but she's also doing teaching and library and stuff like that. But the extra effort that she puts in, in the daytime, uh, to get those phones that are down and, and, and get all that stuff and the pods that aren't working and the pods that we need and the cameras and getting everything kind of coordinated. She did a re- really good job. It was, it was a lot of hectic work right there. Um, and it was all simultaneously, so thanks Carly in the tech department. All right, let's go on to the plumbing of the major elementary project. Um, the water boilers and all the pumps and parts have been ordered yesterday, two to three weeks out. Um, so we're progressing and um, the plans are printed and, and uh, Blancet has the plans, we've got that taken care of. Uh, Bob with Liberty, um, will start wiring next week on, and get the wiring over to the boiler area. So that when um, we get ready to take the old boiler out, put the new boiler in, um, that the wiring is within reach and the pumps can be wired in at the same time, so that's all being coordinated right now. The air vent system, FICO ordered parts um, yesterday to put in isolation valves in place in the big lines so that we can go ahead and fill the boilers. Uh, they're putting them in in two places so that we can uh, also put in strainers, but they're gonna put isolation valves in so that when the, all their stuff comes in, that they can do that again simultaneously. And so the elementary will have heat within a week, um, or be able to be heated within a week. Um, the high school started one day, the elementary's been pretty gorgeous.
Yeah.
It's been pretty decent, so on a normal year, we'd be, we'd kind of be begging for it, but um, if we get the isolation valves in, when the parts come in, uh, or that air system, we'll be able to just continue forward. Um, and they're also gonna be working, uh, FICO's here this next week on their other contract. Um, during teacher convention, they'll be working on the heaters in science, math and math. And they will be uh, replacing all of the valving downstairs so that when they come in, which is about November eleventh, um, they can just put the heaters in and so they're gonna be here with the crew and try to get as much as they can in the next two couple of days when nobody's around. Um, also, we have three companies that are bidding the flu part of the project. And we're hoping that we have the pricing from them on Monday. Um, it's, they got the plan here. On this Monday, it takes about a week. The end of October, the window should be in, they hope to install them eight, the tenth, eleventh in that area uh, or close to as a, uh, couple of warm days. Um, so that is progressing. Blancet's will be here over the teacher convention and that was by design. Uh, a few weeks ago, we talked about that they would be able to get into locker rooms and work on the plumbing. And um, have more time to not have to worry about kids coming in and out, although we do have football practice later in the day. Um, but that's not gonna affect anything, they'll be able to um, work on all that. Uh, they worked on boilers and stuff this last week and we're pretty well up to date on most of all of that. Um, sprinters are getting winterized on October twenty eighth or sooner. Still keep the football field, um, so we can water it a couple of times and we're still working on the outside. Okay.
Are they gonna allow awareness to don't get the fix before ready?
We're, we're. We're pushing right now to get it done.
Well, I know.
Well, but that's kind of, Gary's got these guys kind of on speed dial that this is gonna happen and that it's the liner itself is a twenty-four inch and it's all standard parts and it's all warehouses. So it's not a, not a bendum like we thought about, it's a double line and they'll be able to order it, stack it, stuff it. And so it's just a matter of timing and getting the, the correct you're gonna have to have probably one side, you'll have to have a man in that cubby and then on the outside, the crane. And they'll get all that coordinated and we should be able to do it on a couple of nice days. So, yeah, our, our goal is to just keep, we've got some good weather, we're gonna try to push as far as we can to get it done. We can fire.
That's the one thing.
Yeah. But that's why we're, we're wanting to get those isolation valves in as soon as possible. They can load the water and then, then we're good to go. They can hook up anytime.
Okay.
So, golden.
Thanks.
What's going on?
Good work. It's nice that it's warm right now. Oh, we'll take it. You don't wanna get those heaters out again, do you? Yeah, we'll just, we'll just walk them out here. And I'll have you have visuals around, please. Awesome. Okay, and it's kind of fun. I get to, I be sure you can help me with some of Mr. Cool's report as well if I need to. Um, but let's talk about the elementary first. So we have had a busy September at the elementary. We had Heritage Day on the thirtieth. And that was fun. We managed to keep track of all of our students as we walked um, down to the port. And women's club and the volunteers did a really great job with that. Do you wanna add anything?
Me?
Yeah, it was fun.
Sown our own verses.
Yes.
Survive needles.
Yeah.
All the things.
Yeah, and they survived to the speaker, which is always really good because sometimes you're a little bit concerned about what questions they're gonna ask, but it really went super well.
It was good.
Yeah, it went great. Um, we had midterm on the second of October and we had our fire drill today, so like Mr. Axwin mentioned. Thank you to the volunteer fire department. The kids always love it when the firemen come and they even turned on their sirens. So that was exciting for them as well. It, I was a special request that I made. Um, we'll be hosting a flu clinic at the elementary school on the tenth. I believe the flu clinic at the high school is the thirtieth, the day before Halloween. Yes, and today, um, we had another cooking class and so Karen Giles puts this on and um, helps kind of sponsor it and the kids really enjoy it. Kenzie went today and had a great time. And I think made fresh toast and then something else, but she couldn't really tell me, but they had a great time. And so it's really fun to have some after school activities like that for our kids. Uh, in terms of academics and our MTFS report, we will be having our first round of ES meetings the week after we get back from um, teacher's convention. So that's always a really great time um, to look at the progress that our kids are making, have been making or maybe sometimes the tweaks that need to be made in their intervention plans so that they can be making more. Um, I think one thing we are continuing to focus on is the support of some of the behaviors and their trauma that our children are bringing into the school, so we're so very thankful for Kyla and her support in that. We're also working, um, and, and Pat and I will, I think, be able to line this out about how we handle this a little bit better, but um, Stacy Baronic was a, a licensed school counselor. She has since let, her license lapsed, but she's gonna help cover when Rihanna is out on maternity leave. So I'm very thankful for that. So a lot of times, these kids need patience and a listening ear and an, and an informed ear to, to support them, so I'm very thankful for that. Um, we have red ribbon week coming up, which is every teacher's favorite week at the elementary school, right, Jamie?
Especially when their boss decides they need to dress up like Sarge.
Okay, that was the Halloween. Yeah, absolutely, the last day, so that is the elementary Halloween costume theme this year, yes. Board members are also expected to show up and dress up. In ten, you, I mean, you could maybe be the Cat Week, have you seen the movie? You might wanna watch the movie first. But anyways, um, it should be a good time. Yeah, yeah, so a week full of costumes and it ends on Halloween and we have an assembly on Halloween too, so we're really.
The thirteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's gonna be the big day at the elementary school, maybe February, um, anyway. We also, um, uh, the Golden Triangle Curriculum Club was really helpful with this, but we were able to sign up our special education room for math training. And so that is um, safe restraints and words to use. So we have a couple of high knee kiddos that are at the elementary school. Um, one runs and another can get quite violent. And so we have worked with Shoto, we'll go to Shoto. The special ed department will go to Shoto on November first to finish up their training for the in-person part, so we feel like that was important. Window painting is going to be happening on October twenty second, so a big thanks to Jared for that. He's kind of organizing it and planning out all of the windows. Um, and then this was sent to Mr. Cool, but um, one of our fabulous teachers, Mrs. Hamford, taught a summer class and so this is such a great time for our teachers to get together um, and teach other teachers the great things that they do in their classroom. And so she taught a letter, or she taught a letter, she taught a class um, called Creative Brain Rigs for the classroom. And so Alyssa, the director, wrote, wrote us this letter and shared some of her course evaluations, but it was great to hear tried and true ideas, the pace was great, very nice workshop. Jessica has great ideas and was so energetic and passionate about the class and teaching. I really enjoyed her class. Great class, thank you for sharing your knowledge and your love for learning and you are a superb upbeat educator. You fed us well, which is always important, gave us loads of tips to improve our teaching days, keep kids. You fed us well, which is always important. Gave us loads of tips to improve our teaching days, keep kids focused and expand our educational horizons and budgets. Way to go. So I think a lot of times teachers get a little bit nervous about sharing their knowledge, but they're such great resources. And Mrs. Hamford is an amazing resource. So kudos to her. Do you guys have any questions about the elementary school?
What's the state policy on man?
I'm not sure. I just figured for liability purposes that we better make sure that I'm not trained in man actually either. And so, but I figured that we better get that rolling. Yeah, for sure. So. Yeah, that, yeah, it's been a while, I think, since we've um, like navigating these students is a new experience for us. So making sure. We will after I think, well, I shouldn't probably say that, but um, a couple of these kiddos are up for reevaluation. And then I think maybe after that data, then that will, it's not currently in their IEP right now. We just funded through the special education budget. Yeah. But that would be a direction that we definitely should be heading for sure. Yeah.
And you already had the Devils?
Yeah, we did for sure. So like I said, we'll be getting ready for um, our YET meetings. That's the six weeks of intensive intervention. And then talking about math is an area this year. I think our math is really hard. Common Core is hard. Especially for kiddos maybe that math doesn't come naturally for. I walked into Mrs. Wayne's class and I, I'm not sure if I could do Common Core math, but maybe with it, maybe with the interventions at Fort Ben Elementary, I can handle it. But yeah, so math is always an area where we're looking for new resources and how to support our kids. And we will begin the first round of MAST testing. So that replaced the SBA. That window opens October fourteenth. So I'm just in the process of rostering our kids third through sixth grade and making sure accommodations are in there and things like that before we roll. So.
You wanna replace SBA?
So it's called MAST. M A S T.
Oh.
Yeah, and so the idea is that they take little testlets and they take them in certain windows throughout the year. And these tests are aligned with each grade level's curriculum. Yeah. So I hope it's a better, it's, it's less um, of like a cumulative assessment. Yeah, more of like a, a snapshot through the year. So, um, yeah. So moving on to Mr. Cool's report, he did a great job at prepping me for his report, although I didn't try to be as jazzy as he is. We miss him down, don't we? Um, homecoming, homecoming, two thousand twenty-four was a huge success. And so he wanted to thank everybody with that. Jamie, Russ, all the kids. Always fun. Can't wait for you to wear that cheer costume next year. Right? Sure, perfect. Um, he's been quite busy doing evaluations of new staff members. So he has quite a few new staff members. They also held an interest meeting for the Leos on October second and that is with the Lions Club. It's kind of like a community service club. And at least from the cross-country kids, it sounds like quite a few people showed up. So I thought that was awesome. Twelve. I love that. Twelve showed up. And Fort Ben High School is going to host um, Jason Deschaux. And he's a counselor um, that puts on uh, they're kind of like an assembly and awareness. Mr. Gold will have more information for you guys on how that went at the next board meeting, but we. Suicide convention, thank you.
Earlier and then it got canceled. Jason's been here.
We've had what Jason came and he was like fifth grade. He's been here.
Yeah, but I don't think we're planning for the elementary kiddos to go, are we?
Think it was a little much.
Okay.
I think it was, I think it was like fifth, third and uh, and.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that's a fit. Cause he, we haven't, but we were one in ten school selected for that. So that's great. Um, we had a P I R day and I was coaching cross-country and watching our longhorns rock and roll. But um, Pat was here and we had an IFA training that Alyssa from Golden Triangle as well helped us put on. And Tanara did a great job doing like a child protective training for our staff on how to deal with that and make phone calls and make sure that the safety of our students is of the utmost concern. And I'm doing the IFA training. Yes, and it was great, right?
It was good.
I heard awesome things about it. So that was awesome. And yes, that will help us with our accreditation report that Pat and I get to do in this spring. Um, big picture themes, Pat, Tanara, Rihanna and I have been kind of working on reviewing the emergency handbook. Um, we had our third meeting that was held on October second and the handbook will be shared with the board upon completion. And we'll be working on really establishing a crisis team to handle any situations like that. That was something Pat really wanted to work on. Um, some upcoming events, like I said, we have teachers convention. You guys will all be buying your Barbie costumes for Halloween. And that is all I have, right?
Yeah.
Ken? Yes. Ken, you're gonna have to buy a Ken costume because Anna's got like the traditional Barbie. And like she's like, yeah, this is pretty like. Yeah, she's like the traditional Barbie. It's so cute. Yeah. We were all trying to figure out like what kind of Barbie. Like our preschool teacher will be farm girl Barbie. I don't know. Yeah. So we don't need to talk about that anymore. So thank you. Happy October.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. I think Kelly, you were kind of in between of two, so I'll come back to you.
Okay. So I don't really have much other than the pageant and the SBA. Um, give our current financial picture and we're sitting right about where we should um, for the, um, for the year. So far, so good. Um, and I don't have title count for you um, this month. Because how we do our title count now, it's not in the same system we used to put it in. We now have to enter all of that information into AIM. And so title count is now affected by school schedule and how many minutes they have for recesses and all of these other factors. So it is taking Rocky and I way longer.
Yeah, she's amazing. But she's really.
She is. And Rocky, yeah, it's amazing. Um, for what we have to do now compared to what we used to do. We used to just count them and put them in the system. And now you have to count them and how many, you know, minutes they were actually in instruction and how many minutes they were reached and how many like it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of busy work. So thank OPI for that. So that is all I really have. And no, obviously, property, cause Paul wasn't here. So.
Okay, thank you.
That is pretty short of three.
I do have one question. So uh, in the elementary, I believe, was under miscellaneous programs. So this is like a budget of sixty-nine, ended twenty-six. I just curious what that, what goes into that?
What goes into that?
Like one fifteen.
One fifteen involves several um, grants.
Okay.
So any of the grants that we get from the state or federal, so IDEA, which is like Title One, um, Title Four, REAP, which is small rural school program.
Okay.
Um, that was where SR money was sitting. So anything that's not local dollars goes into one fifteen.
Okay.
So one fifteen actually isn't a budgeted fund. So that's why it looks wonky there with that negative, that unexpended.
Yeah.
Because what has happened is I've, I've spent the money, but I haven't requested it yet because of how this month fell.
Oh, okay.
I was at chemo when you have to get online and request it. So it's a week, it's a month late from showing up. So when it comes next, it'll change.
Okay.
You must break it out to another place also.
What's the difference between my fifteen and three fifteen?
I think fifteen is the co-op. That's the co-op that we're talking about.
I'm just trying to break one fifteen out from Perkins.
Oh, Perkins is in two fifteen.
Oh.
High school.
So many members.
Yeah.
And then the technology fund under two twenty-eight, is that where it goes through the cameras?
Yep. If, so if you like look at your school financing, all the numbers like one-on-one, two-on-one, they're all the same things of high school and elementary school. So all the numbers are the same, other than your elementary school is a one in the front and your high school is with two in the front. And then they're all the same bunch.
And three is their co-op.
And that three is the co-op, which that, yeah, that is something, I'm gonna find out, very unique to our school. The, the co-op funding is within, embedded within our elementary school. And that's something I'm currently dealing with too.
It's quite a lot. Yeah.
It is quite a lot. So, and that's why the, the co-op really has nothing to do with our board, other than you have to be aware of it because it's embedded within your funding. So we're the financial agent for the co-op.
That's because we had separate buildings, if I recall.
Well, the, we have one fifteen or we have one hundred accounts and two hundred accounts because we have separate building.
Yeah.
So the co-op was something that was started back in nineteen eighty-nine, I'm gonna find out. And it was one of the very first co-ops in the state for special ed. And so when Jeanette had started that, it was kind of a unique thing. Well, now co-ops are standalone things. Well, ours never was because it was a experiment back in the early eighties of how to do that. So now we're trying to figure out how to manage that within all of the strengths of budgeting and auditing and yeah, it's been a little interesting. So. Um, but we're gonna do more of a plan.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yep.
Okay, um, I'll have to, um, committee reports, which we don't have any committee meetings to report on this month. Um, we need to schedule any committee meetings. We haven't had policy in a while. We haven't tabled it. But we haven't had any.
New ones come through. So there's nothing really urgent yet.
So.
So are you comfortable with where we're at? Going to make some ground? I think we're taking formation progress, so you?
Yeah, as far as I know, as far as I was told, we didn't have to have a meeting because there was, you know, because we were, of how we were splitting the project and stuff. But you guys, at any point, you need to have one.
Okay.
You can decide that if you need.
I think we're okay. As well, really wants.
Okay. Um. So, um, I don't think we have any resignations, but we do have some staff hiring and um, Pat's not here.
We did have one resignation um, from Bob, the other.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, so but that's, yeah, it is.
Okay, thank you. So um, staff hiring, Rocky, you can support me on these if you, um, if you want. But Amanda Lewis is um, recommended um, for a hire in the kitchen um, because one of our employees, um, we are not sure, she had an accident and moved it out and we're not sure if he's able to reach her. Yes, yeah. And so she's been a great sub in the kitchen and has already held her kitchen out a lot. So yes. Mandy is her, is kind of what she goes by. I think Amanda, but yeah. Yeah, Mandy Lewis. Yeah.
Part of the reason we'd like, she's on the sub list, but if we, part of the reason we'd like to hire her permanently is it provides her with some sick and vacation days.
Yeah. And she's been working really hard.
Now she's just a sub. She doesn't have, you know, the bigger vacation time, which I feel like she rightfully needs to earn now that she's pretty permanent.
Yeah.
Is there any, um, so this other employee, are we, we, so she is on like medical disability. So she's on FMLA at the moment. And as long as she tries to come back during that FMLA period, you would need to give her her job back. Correct. Can we support another staff member? Okay.
Cause once Honesty comes back, Amanda would go back to being a sub.
Okay.
Hmm.
And she's okay with that or?
Yeah, she is.
She is. I think kids are preference.
Yeah, that's.
She would rather not be full-time, but she doesn't wanna leave the school in the words either.
Problems from Cory every day. She's, she's happy to go back to what she would do.
But I felt like it was our due diligence where she's more permanent to get a little bit of a wage increase and to get the sick and vacation. So.
So put the right pain to do.
She's doing the high school and the medical stuff and I mean, she, she did pretty good, big problem. I'll make the motion. I don't care.
Thank you very much.
Is this being kitchen? Is that district one only then or is?
Not because she did both.
Any other questions or discussion? If you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion passes. Hey, next on the list, um, is Stacy Baronic is a substitute. Rocky mentioned that. Is there anything else you wanted to say about that? We're just like, I'm super thankful that she's willing to come in. Um, her little girl's in preschool, so she'll be here in the morning instead of in the afternoon, which can be really helpful because sometimes our kids definitely need like a, probably like a hug or some love in the morning um, so that they can have a good day. But yeah, it'll be great working with her. So she seems a little nervous, but she's, we're gonna get her.
She's on top of it.
She is and I love it. So I'm so excited to have her. Yeah. I told, yeah, she might even um, help me with some assembly and stuff. She wasn't super sure about that, but we'll. Although, you're never out. Don't worry, yes. So this can be um. This is just elementary. You don't hire a pastor.
No, she doesn't want to be.
Okay, district one only then.
Oh, thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Lauren.
Thank you. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of those, motion passes. Okay. And then finally, um, we have the custodian, Bead and Manny. And do we just say, well, I guess it doesn't matter. This is everybody. So, um, who we're asked about? Any questions about that one?
Uh, who picked the option to hire Aiden then?
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion passes. Okay, thanks everyone. Any future, then I don't know. All right. Can I switch?
Robotics.
I was just gonna say, yeah, the robotics. We'll, I guess, yeah, we can have a discussion maybe and see if we can have that one. Actually, if we needed if we.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm a little unclear on whether or not board votes needed in any case, or if we. Our A D B is ready to make a decision on that.
No, because we always, we pull them off for like basketball.
Oh, and I was gonna say that. Sorry, I saw that on there. I think that's from previous years. It probably got left on there. Undermine, sorry. And what you told me last year when I asked you was that my job was to only inform you because that's, to make that decision with the coaches after the number fifteen. Right. So. Whatever you choose to do is great. Okay. All right, we'll address that later. Go ahead.
Um, when I have an update, I'll make sure that the board gets an email through the system on what we're doing down there and how the plans are coming, like, like within a week or whatever, when we get stuff finalized. I'll make sure that each board member gets their email, check it, send it out and update on progress on how we're doing here and give this pushover.
That'd be fantastic. Cause there will be a lot of progress in the next, yeah, month or so, a lot of activity. So that would be great. And then it'll save you some breath and you get to your board report. Yeah. Okay. Alligator?
Yeah.